We are without a quorum.
Kat said she wouldn't be here.
Okay, and Joe's coming with. So there are several things that I can do, I think, without the quorum. Although we can approve the agenda, I have a couple things to add to the agenda.
Where's Patrick?
Patrick is, Bob, Patrick's out of town today.
Oh, he's got some good news.
He's watched Kat.
He has got minutes.
Oh.
And Joe is on the way, and Kat is on the way. There's people who have to work. What is their problem?
Well, can I ask a question that's not part of the agenda or any of that?
Yeah.
As for water bills. So last month, not this present day, I suddenly got a water bill that jumped three levels. From level one to level three, and I had not changed my water bill. So I called Barbara, and she very nicely came over. She read my water meter. She said it's accurate. And she said, Anne, you're already halfway, and this is like about the ninth of the month. You're already halfway to that new seat again. And I had no reason. Well, when my bill arrived this time, I'm back at a regular number, about sixty-seven, whatever. Jerry Vogel, who is my neighbor, our water readers are practically side by side, he's jumped one level. And this time, he's back. In the meantime, Caroline Anstey got a $500 bill. And she called, and they said it would be investigated. It hasn't been, and she's gotten another $500 bill. She's not even there for a deal. When she was traveling abroad, she turned all of her water off, including the toilets and all. So I am wondering about either the meter reading, if we had some cosmic force that speeded them all up, if in fact we don't need water meters. Plus, I got a late charge. So did Jerry. I can show that my check applied on the 24th, and he paid us at the bank on the 27th. So, but we all have late fees, and we weren't late. So I am just going into your attention Barbara, who's been great, came out and read the meter and... But something is wonky. Certainly on Carol's Hall, and she, but Caroline is in Carol's Hall, and I don't know if anybody else experienced this.
But she's cooked.
Yeah, she's right across, on the same street. So now, as I say, my water meter, my water bill this month is right back where it once did. Seldom, I had a leak several months ago, but I...
That's it, those are not...
If I, I mean, I live alone.
Those are not concerns. The only thing that I will add, and then I will defer to Brad and Barbara, who can probably help you after this meeting, rather than during this meeting.
Yeah, well, I, at this moment, other than that late fee, which I can deal with with part of the one-on-one.
Right, but the only thing I can think of...
Now, I'm just wondering if there's something wrong with the formula and what they change and who's doing all the billing?
It could be. We also have a full period, and there's, sometimes a water heater can... I don't know.
I got a $1,000 water bill at Middleton, and this is after the horses were gone. And so there was no water for the horses, right? So it was like everything had just wound down to almost zero, no guests. And it was a thousand dollars, and nobody could figure out why. This is before the decline.
And did you have to pay it?
Um, there was some negotiation that happened, so I had to pay some of it, but not all of it, no.
The only thing I can think of, and I know from my previous experiment, experience with Alamo County, is that they, they will do estimates, and then about every three months, they actually check the meter.
But here, they doesn't, isn't it?
I don't know.
Don't we read the meters every month?
Yes, we do read the meters every month. I don't know if I'm allowed to comment on individuals' channels.
I would say at this point, let's, let's go ahead. I'm sensitive that I don't want to get into your...
Oh, no, I understand. I just wanted to raise it because it's now three people, and...
That ensures a movement.
A movement, this time, absolutely. And, and then this late fee thing, that's what made me wonder about, because I, I could go on, I made my computer, so I could see exactly when it got here. And then Jerry, of course, being Jerry, went off to the bank to talk to the clerk, where he wrote the check, blah, blah, blah.
Well, my water bill is at zero, and I've got a long hose connected to Judy's house.
I know it. It's a long hot shower, you see.
All right, Jerry, you have to start cutting that off.
So is Gail off the table?
Uh, Gail is, is not here for personal reasons.
Ah.
We have a quorum.
Anything?
Welcome, everyone, to the March 9, 2020 meeting, the Council of the Town of Washington, Virginia. The first order of business is the agenda, and I sent some information out to council members for their review on, I can't remember what it was, Sunday morning or Saturday, probably Sunday morning. So I'd like to put under new business F, proposal for... I don't...
No, it's P. There's a...
Oh, sorry. Oh, it's already in there. Forgive me. I'm looking at an old one. It's already in there, okay. And then we have the closed session in there, so everything that I wanted is already in there. I was looking at an early draft, forgive me. All right, so I don't have any changes to the agenda. Does any other council member have changes to the agenda?
I might have, but they're not in that announcement.
Okay. All right. Then may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann seconds. Roll call, vote, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Minutes. We have minutes from the February 10, 2020 meeting. Are there any questions? And I wanted to add one more time, and I'll probably do it each month from here on out. How much we appreciate Barbara's timeliness in getting these minutes out to us. It's a big help.
It's a lot easier to remember. Do you want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
All right, thank you. Second, Captain seconds. Roll call, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, minutes are approved. Mayor's report. I have four things to bring up. First, the trees, which was delayed from the fall, the planting of the cherry and, was it redbud trees? That is to occur, is going to happen on April 8th and 9th. So please call, if you are going to be part of that, please call Ms. Utility. Have them do the appropriate markings for your property. And they also, you need to have available, when the crew comes on the 8th and 9th, you need to have a copy of a signed waiver form before they can go ahead and start doing the work. So be sure you do those things, and then they recommended getting two bags, I think it was, of leaf compost from the trough. And I think that will be very helpful for you. The second piece of information I have is that the, the thing that would be on my gravestone, which is the post office of Washington, Virginia, is in process. I appeared at the last meeting without meaning to, that I'd been misled, that we had gotten approval from the DEQ. It ends up the exact opposite. We were turned down from the DEQ, and so we're looking, there's a easier alternative, which is that you have a holding tank gathered underneath the parking lot to, to retain all the stormwater. Because we do not have to go through DEQ to do that, my sense from the builder is that he will have his engineers prepare the plans for the planning office this week, and as soon as the planning office gives the okay, he will start, start the construction. So he is hoping in about three weeks. So it's all very exciting. There may be one or two more wrinkles in there, but hopefully we will get those resolved. And as I said, the, the, this is like a soap opera, and I'm sure there will be another chapter. But the best indication of where things stand is to look around the beginning of April and see if there's some construction still. I will say that we do have a, a, I don't want to call it a committee, a group of concerned town citizens who are being helpful in addressing some of the issues around the post office. We had a very good meeting on Saturday, and I urge anyone in the town who is interested in being part of that group to please let me know. We will probably have another meeting in the very near future with the builder. That is upcoming. The third thing I'd like to bring up is a heartfelt thanks, first to Mary Ann and to Catherine for all they did to make the Spring Social last Sunday a fun event. Thoroughly enjoyed myself. Had some very delicious orders in the afternoon, snack foods, it was great. And I want to thank everybody who came. It was a fun, fun time. So thank you. And finally, I have some sad news, and that is that we are about to lose one of our town council members. Catherine, to my right, has been involved with the town for a long, long time as a resident, being born here?
No, I was born here.
Okay, but you're, you continue a legacy from your father, who was the mayor here for many years, and have been serving the town for over 12 years, first on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Planning Commission, and the Town Council. And we, we have gained greatly from having your participation. We are losing Catherine to, the Commonwealth is going to keep her, but she is going to be in another part and moving to Lake of the Woods, is that where?
Orange, right.
Orange County. And on behalf of the Town Council, I was thinking of getting you some cut flowers, and I said, I'm not going to do that. She's going to move into a new place. So I thought it would be much nicer to get her some stinky hyacinths, because they are such beautiful plants.
And you can replant them.
And you can replant them.
Lovely.
So...
That's wonderful.
And a card from all of us, so I'll leave it to you.
Thank you so much.
So thank you. Thank you so much for all that you've done. The, the, there will be an ad, I'm, I'm sorry, it's kind of like the king is dead, long live the king. But there will be an ad in this week's Rappahannock News inviting people to apply for new vacancy on the Town Council. So we can replace the position, but not the person. So thank you, Catherine, for every comment.
Thanks so much. It was appreciated, and I'll tell you, it's been a pleasure and an honor to, to be here, to be able to be here, and I think that Brad has been on every... I think we both came in at the same time to the Free Z Day, and then we've been on almost every community of the Town Council together. And it's so amazing. It's such a tiny place, and everybody is interested, and that's what's so fantastic. And I know everyone will do what they can, and I really, really hope there's a variety of people stepping up, because it's so important to have a variety of opinions up here to balance things and, and to keep up the transparency. Thank you all. It's been an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the mayor's report. Gail is not able to be here tonight, and so I have been asked to pinch it with the treasurer's report. And the treasurer's report, because of a family emergency, she was unable to complete it for tonight. We do have a record of the bills to be paid, which I will submit for the Town Council's review and vote. The treasurer reports she will do in the next week and send it to Town Council members, and then we can discuss and prove it at the April meeting. There was a question raised regarding the amount of meals and lodging tax in the February report. It was just a matter of timing when payments were received. Various entities were catching up on their bookkeeping. The normal report would have been approximately $40,000 versus the $70,000 that was reported due to this, the, the timing. Obviously, the town works on a cash basis for its accounting, and so there's no way to adjust the report. The third part, which I assume is in there, is the financial, I'm not seeing it right now. Oh, there it is. So the third, I will defer until the, until we get to the new business, which is approval of some financial procedures. So on behalf of the treasurer, I submit the bills to be paid and ask for a motion to approve that, is...
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Statute with a couple of spelling directions.
All right, so roll call, approval of the bills to be paid, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Instead of talking, I'm going to invite Judy, as a member of the Planning Commission. Do you want to add to your...
The Planning Commission did not meet last month. The month before, we worked on some draft recommendations, not draft language, on the two things America has to look at, and we will, as a group, quote on that and send it to you.
Great, thank you very much.
We will be meeting this time.
Okay, which is the fourth Monday?
Uh, yes.
All right, great. And there's no meeting anybody here from the Architectural Review Board?
There is no meeting this month.
And there's no meeting this month, so their next meeting will be their April meeting, which is on the second Wednesday. Mr. Bennett?
Nothing else to say?
I thought this was going to be a long meeting.
Me too.
Okay.
I could come up with something.
No, 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 no.
You're good.
No, well, we'll catch you off. We have the proposal for, the capacity proposal for the wastewater treatment plant. Brad, would you like to go ahead and comment on that?
Yeah, we had a conversation with Don Roth on that. And the important part is that we ask for a change in the amount, bringing it down to, I think it was $70,000, which we talked about in the last meeting, which Don agreed to. What he's going to do in order to, is... The report is going to include the review of the waterworks, and what he's going to do is just give us a couple paragraphs, an in-depth review of that system.
Of the waterworks.
The waterworks. What we will be doing is an in-depth review of the wastewater plant, all the equipment, inventory, everything, coming up with what's the life and, and, you know, some projections going forward, as well as calculations on capacity, which is part of the original plan.
And you feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
All right, so we are, we are here. Good, then I guess at this point it is up to us as a council to vote on approval for the proposal.
No.
No.
You approved it last time, if...
If the conditions were met.
Yep.
Okay, good, excellent. Do you know when he will begin his work, and do you know how long it will take him?
I think he was just waiting for our approval, and... No, he did not give us a start time, because again, he just wanted to confirm that we were approved at the new rate. The project hours, he said it's approximately 74 hours, so fits in the price limit, so... Once he starts, it's about that.
Would it be too much to ask to think that he might have it by the April meeting?
I can certainly ask him. We'll see if we can get that approved.
Okay.
Going on it. Definitely.
Well, he's got the green light.
Okay.
To go ahead and do it. The next item on the agenda is budget assumptions, and I reach out to my fellow council members and ask again if there are any thing that we should, if you wish not to bring them up here, to at least bring them up, or to think about them, and be sure to bring them up at our March 28 budget meeting, which will occur from 9:00 to 12:00, Barbara, here in Town Hall. This is a public meeting. If you are coming, bring your calculators and slide rules and your, your... Yeah, and your caffeine pills. And we'll have it this time. Anything that you want to add in terms of budget assumptions? This time's...
Budgeting for the marketing of the property the town still has.
That's something we consider.
In case anybody's having any trouble reading, I encourage them to read the audits for the last four years.
All right. That being done, temporary clerical support. I must admit, I dropped the ball. I apologize. I did not do my duty, which I will do this week, which is contact the high school. So what I'd like to do is have two weeks, be able to contact them and give them the time to pass that around to the students and see if anybody is interested before we post something. So should we say two weeks, let me see, today's the 9th, so 23rd, should we go ahead and consider posting an ad, because that's what we were talking about, is the next step? Was that the next step?
If, if...
If that didn't work out? So why don't we, why don't we aim by the end of that week, the week of the 27th? And if we do not have any sufficient, then we will go ahead and do an ad. I don't think that requires a roll call, but that's a, that's, I don't even know if that needs to have a motion to it. It's just a suggestion and plan, so I think just, all those in favor, just indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Let's go ahead and go with that point.
And again, I apologize. All right, new business. Consideration of consulting services proposal by Don Harrow. This is separate from the proposal, the capacity proposal for the wastewater treatment plant. All right. Brad, I'll let you go ahead and speak to this if you would.
Basically, what it is, Don has retired from ESS, and he's remained in the area. Don has helped us for a great number of years, pretty much from inception to his plan coming forward. He's got a lot of knowledge and expertise, and we don't want to lose that, so he is doing some consulting work, and he gave us a proposal to work for us as needed at the rate of $100 an hour, which, considering his expertise and such, is a very reasonable fee.
Including travel expenses?
Yeah.
So I, I read that as saying it's $100, and he's going to, and he's going to eat the cost of the travel.
I think he probably means plus.
Plus travel expenses.
Yeah, that would be logical, because I don't have a reason to indicate that. Yep.
And he lives in Orange. Is, he's, this is not driving all the way from, from Abingdon?
Right, right. He's very close.
Okay. Then I guess what we have to do is have a motion to approve, get a second, and then we can have a discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
You need a second?
A second. Any discussion? Any questions? It's just all the way.
Yeah.
I just want to say, he's been around for a long time. He's known this project from the beginning, all the ins and outs, and he's probably a great, the best person you could get for that.
Yeah, yeah. I think, in fact, I talked to him one day, I think he was employee number two at ESS when he started. So he's been around. He knows the wastewater industry.
Since the very beginning.
Yeah.
All right, there's no other discussion, and we have a motion. All those in favor, please indicate by roll call, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. That is done. Funding proposal. I brought this up to council members, and we have had, certainly in my time as mayor, an opportunity to receive grants from governmental agencies, but also there are people who have an interest, altruistic interest in contributing funds to support the Town of Washington. The Town of Washington is a very peculiar place. Most towns will have people through a, or not most, a number of towns will have people provide funds through a community fund, or through a community foundation, or something like that that might benefit the town. But it doesn't receive much publicity, because most towns are of a significant size, and the size of the gifts are not significant enough to make a huge difference. Or there are agencies within the town that provide the services. An example that comes to mind is the Dave Matthews Band, which has contributed untold millions through various organizations in the Town of Charlottesville and Alamo County to benefit the community there. The Town of Washington is so small, and yet we have some people who have great resources that wish to support the efforts of the town. And I want to emphasize that, that is not to support any political means or to support any particular purpose. any particular purpose. And I'll give you an example. The developer, based upon the guidelines from the U.S. Postal Service, is going to build us a rectangular brick building for our post office. And there are some people in the community who are very interested in providing some additional funds so that we can have a building that has perhaps more of a pitch to it, have other enhancements that will make it more in line with the character and the architecture of the community. Right now, there is really not a way that they can make a tax deductible gift that benefits this kind of effort. And what I am suggesting or proposing is that we use an organization such as the Northern Piedmont Community Fund or Foundation to set up designated funds. So the donor would not really control what the money goes for, except that the donor would contribute to a specific fund that has a specific purpose for the benefit of the town. And that would be established by the town council. And so you might have multiple funds that are established by the town council. The funds would be able to receive donations. The donations would be tax deductible. The donors would be listed in the annual report of the community foundation and we could figure out some way to list them in an annual report of the town. And I'm trying to think of some way where there is a sense of transparency, but yet a way to benefit the town as it goes forward. And so that is kind of where my thinking is. And I would welcome first thoughts from members of the town council and from the town attorney. And then I'd like to invite members of the public after we've heard from members of the town council. Any thoughts?
Well, transparency is obviously a big key. And like you say, it's allowing people to donate and it's sort of after the fact that they can be recognized. I like that, you know, we use essentially a third party that allows that money to come in and then we designate projects they select to put the money to. So I think that gives us something that, you know, we don't have right now because there's a handful of things I'm sure that we could pick up as a list of, you know, be nice to do, we'd like to do, to enhance the town. This is, I think is a great way.
And by the way, one thing I forgot to mention is that the town council, before any funds are expended, the town's council would have to approve the expenditure of any funds from, from these different funds that we would have.
Is there more than one?
Well, I'm thinking there has been talk about doing some kind of strategic planning for the town. The, the post office is the one that's the most eminent.
Is there more than one entity that donors could, that we would talk to about doing this for us?
You mean in, other than?
Is there more than one donor?
The Piedmont Foundation?
Right.
Okay. So it would, so I think the best way to describe is we have these different buckets and the buckets would be designated.
Right.
And in my sense, they would all be held by an entity such as the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation.
Okay.
But they would, they would be accounted for separately. So, so there would be X amount in this and it would be completely distinct from Y amount that might be in this other bucket.
Right.
And so.
So it has to be another possible.
Right. So it could be a donor there, you know, another bucket might be some funding for walkways. To try to get walkways through VDOT is going to be a three to five year process versus getting some walkways through private donations might happen a lot more quickly.
Yeah.
So those are, those three areas are the three that come to mind.
Okay.
And people have already expressed an interest in, in contributing.
Who, who are the people? I mean, not by name, but are these people in the town or in the county or where?
Some of them are in the town, some of them are in the county, but they're, they're very interested in the town.
What percentage are in the town of the group?
Of the people that I've talked with, probably eighty percent, ninety percent are in the town. So I only know of one person outside of the town.
Of the, I mean, the town itself, not Washington, Virginia?
Not the zip code. I'm talking about within the town limits.
And this group, is it how many people would you say? Is it a dozen?
I think it depends on, on which, because it's not the same people who want to contribute to all the different things. So I, I don't know who all the donors are, but I said, you know, a couple of people have said, you know, God, I wish we could put in some money to the post office. I have a whole bunch of people with their hands up and that, and say, okay. So that's the most, as I said, the most imminent one that comes to mind.
Brad, we're already, we've already taken over the landscaping of the post office. So this is for the actual building alterations. So then you would have a fund for that and then you'd maybe have a fund for, or maybe it would be for beautification of public buildings, something like that, public spaces.
So there's been a dream of some people to get all the lines from overhead and get them buried. And, and ramp, ramp handed electric is not going to do it. Not in our time.
Or a vehicle.
Yeah, or a significant vehicle. It may never happen, but the chance of it happening through this vehicle is more likely. Again, it's not happening. And so that's really what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to figure out a vehicle for, and it's again, the town council is going to have absolute control of the expenditure of any of the funds from here. The town council will set up the funds and all the donors to a fund would be listed in annual report so that there would be a chance to have, again, a sense of transparency and a sense that the town would have control. What I am not interested in, in any way, is having this be what's called a donor advised fund where the donor is indicating, I want this money to go to that purpose or to do that. That is, that is not something.
And it has to be done exactly this way.
Yeah. And that, that is not at all of any interest.
Maybe some of that, I say.
Right.
Yeah, but it's.
The flowers are allowed as a bucket.
Yes, right.
And possibly a lot of things would have to be approved, ARBE.
Right. So we have different organizations in place, the ARBE and so on and so forth to, to make sure that we adhere to this.
Who in the town would be in charge of this or administering it with this, with whatever foundation?
The, the, the foundation would administer it and they would give us a report on it. And then the town council at meetings would determine what expenditures have to happen. And then they will determine based upon what the purpose of the fund is, whether one of the members of the town council is tasked with overseeing this activity or making sure that it's done in an appropriate way. So the idea is that.
Like the vice mayor.
Like, yeah, the vice mayor. I see what you're saying.
No, actually, I'll help out anyway, but, so tonight, what have we been doing? Just talking about it for the first time and letting it marinate, let it marinate or what?
That was my original intent. There is an opportunity with the post office. I think, here's the conundrum, of course. Everything with government rolls slowly and, and the post office theoretically may start construction in three weeks. And if they have to order materials, a different pitch in the roof and some of these other things, it may not happen if we have to wait till the April meeting to approve. I don't want to rush into this though. And so I think if we need to figure out a way, we can figure out some kind of contraption so that we can delay it. But I, I would prefer, I think, while I feel a sense of rush on this, I would prefer to allow council members to have a chance to think about it and process it for a month and then bring it up at the April meeting for, for vote. And I'll figure out something in the meeting.
They do charge a minimal fee.
Oh, what is it?
Well, there's a different, there is a different fee. We'll wait for the public comment.
Is there any reason the town can't have its own 501(c)(3)?
Well, exactly the point the mayor brought up, the town is already qualified, local government is a qualified organization, receiving tax deductible donation.
Can you hold her? It is?
It is, it is. But only if it's for a public purpose. So the classic example is, I'll give the town fifty thousand dollars if you offer a reward to catch so and so, this, that could, whoever commits this crime. So most governments don't go that way because it's like buying action in the town. Because if you take it, you gotta do what he said.
But, well, are you ready for public comment?
Not quite.
So, but let's say we're at the post office, for example. And let's say towns that are, we already have a community that is, a community that deals with the post office or the, and they said, here's what we want to do. The general public of little Washington, would you like to help us pay to make the post office difference? There is no reason right now that someone could not give us money when we ask for a specific thing that we were going to do. If we said we're raising money to do, or we're raising additional funds for the post office through donation, there's no reason that someone could not make a donation.
You make solicitations that you're donating, that's how it's going to be used.
Right.
Sort of the reverse, but you have some possibility.
Without any reason for that. Okay. Just kidding.
Yeah. The only concern I have would be you would have to not only give the name of the donor, but you would have to give the amount of the donation. That would be part of public record.
Everything is public.
Right. And some people who want to make a significant gift are comfortable having their name, but not the amount of their gift being made public.
But wouldn't that be made public when the, the foundation?
The foundation, but the foundation report would show the names, but not the.
But not the amount?
Right.
Interesting.
So it's a conundrum. Because you have to be sensitive to the donors. If someone gives a significant amount of money, let's say fifty thousand dollars, he doesn't want to have every person saying, oh my God, you know, let's go ahead and hit them with a bunch of solicitations.
But don't they, why thought they had to make it public?
They have to make the, the donors public.
And if it's, and if the money is for public, is for use of public buildings handled by the elected, so by the public, it doesn't have to be.
Well, I think the thing is you could have a donor who says, I'm going to put in fifty thousand dollars to the foundation. And then the foundation says, okay, we have this thing that you can put money into, but what is actually dispersed is maybe twenty-five thousand because that's all that requires. So they donated in excess. So again, it allows them to not necessarily show how much money is going into a particular item. And I think that's where the foundation works.
I'm kind of thinking of, that's not Piedmont. Because I think they've had to, hadn't, I just remember reading like three years ago whenever I was more active with that. So I, I don't know. Do they have to reveal the donors and the amount or is that?
I've been.
Well, this, this landscaping of the post office, excuse me, is a, is a good example. But if someone wanted to donate money directly to the town to do that, that's not necessarily a public purpose because it's somebody else's property and the town wants to do it just to enhance the town overall. But it's nothing directly related to any responsibility that the town has. Whereas if you have this foundation, it gives more flexibility because it can be deductible for the donor and it can come to the town for purposes that might be the direct public purpose.
So we'll use a little more.
Just give donations, yeah. This is a.
It's a good conversation.
A nice thing to do. So is this sort of like, reminds me of, I think it was last August or September, we were talking about the strategic planning for the town.
Right.
And somebody wanted to donate, it was fifty thousand or a hundred thousand for this study. And I think the planning commission took it up and came back with some concerns about transparency because the donor did not want it to be identified.
Right.
Is that right? So this is sort of a way to do it.
Yeah, so that we maintain some transparency, but you also allow the donor to feel some sense of confidentiality. Because what I found is, again, if you have some donors who want to make significant gifts, they, they don't mind having their name on a roll. I mean, they're bothered by that, but they can live with that, but they are very concerned that they have their name and a dollar amount next to their name. Because then it leaves them wide open to start getting a lot of solicitations.
Yeah.
I, I actually was in that business.
I do. I have done my life as on foundations, very large foundations and originally.
So have I.
And, are you ready for public comment?
Not quite.
All right.
Unless, unless, do we want to invite the public in while we're still having this discussion? Okay. I'm just trying to keep it in some kind of order.
Probably one question before we do that is, is the procedure to become a part of this, how long would that take? Is it something that can quickly be set up such that it could benefit the post office?
I would hope so, yeah.
Okay.
What happened is the post office, we have a fifteen thousand dollar allowance.
Right.
But I think a lot of the things that we're talking about will go well beyond the fifteen thousand dollar allowance that we have.
Sure, sure.
All right, let's invite the public.
I just want to say one more thing before the public. The Northern Piedmont Foundation, I, I have lots of respect for it and it's done wonderful things, but are any of the people in the community that you're talking about that want to contribute money, are they associated with the foundation?
Not that I know of, no.
In any way?
Not that I know of. I, they may have given already through the Piedmont, I mean, the Piedmont Community Foundation.
Yeah.
But I don't, and I don't know if they're on the board and if that's something that's a critical step, we can go ahead and say that's, I mean, there are, there are probably other vehicles.
Why was this, I know this is a great organization and I mean that and I do agree with you. And they've helped lots of different causes that I was a part of. But were there other foundations considered besides this one?
No, because, and, and I have not considered them. I have not talked to them specifically. I said, I was using them as an example because they're, most foundations, there, there aren't a lot of community foundations in this, in this area that, that are these kinds of, that serve this area, that do this kind of work as a foundation. Both of them are funded by a family or funded by an individual or funded by whatever group and has a, a usually distinct group of purposes that it provides money for. So this is a different kind of foundation. Anyway, I opened. Anyway, I open it. Judy. Judy Disarno, resident of the town. Please indicate your name and your.
My name is Judy Disarno, and I live on Harrison Road in the town. I owned my house for eighteen years. And know a lot about foundations. And I'm challenging one of the foundations there. It's, on one hand, sounds like a wonderful idea. Yes, I'll take a percentage, that's not my worry. Now that John Bannon has told us you can make a direct contribution and it will be tax deductible for things, the town has decided at once. I don't know that the town.
I've decided that at once, it has to be a governmental, public.
Right, a government, okay. But right now, the way this is going, it leaves an outside group deciding what should be done in the town. Yes, you're gonna vote for it, I mean, you have to say, yes, we want that done. You haven't decided if you want a strategic plan done. We have a comprehensive plan that's done that calls for development on the edges, if that's what the strategic plan is supposed to be about. With all the available resources, how that can happen? We haven't decided as a town that we actually want to put in sidewalks. We have, and so, if somebody gives money to a foundation, Pied, Northern Piedmont, and it is a good foundation, and they're well placed to do this, to say, I, you write a memorandum of understanding of what that money is to be spent for. They're gonna decide that. You can say, we'd like money spent here and there. But I, Judy Disarno, decide I wanna remake this town in some way. And I'm willing to put a hundred thousand dollars in there for my plan. Then you are letting an outside group decide your vision and where you're gonna do point forward. And I'm certain that some of the people who are interested in doing this, particularly on the strategic plan part, have a vested interest in what they want to have happen here. Now, some of that vested interest in what they'd like to do, I think is terrific. But there are procedures in place already to do it. And we've already decided on things like expanding the boundaries. And we all know there's all sorts of procedures you have to go through to make it happen. We can't just say, we're going to take this land and thus, whatever. So, I'm very concerned about your own governance of saying, an outside group of people, that you're not gonna know, you're gonna get an annual report with a list of names with no numbers. So, somebody could be on five dollars and be on that list, or somebody could give a hundred thousand dollars and be on that list, and not be a part of this town, but have their own set ideas of what this town should go to. And so, it worries me greatly. The idea, I think, is great, you could set up your own foundation, but it doesn't sound like you actually need to. So, if somebody, if the town decided, we really do need to be, to do a more comprehensive plan exact, that really fleshes out the comprehensive plan, is that a governmental reason somebody could give money?
Yes, that's required statutory obligation.
But then you would have to use their name, so you would know if it's Jim Abdo, who wants to develop forty acres, or whatever. So, I'm just saying, that's my caution. It's not a bad idea, but there's already a way to do it. And a way to do it that doesn't take away from the town, when the town has decided the priorities with the citizens. And so, that is my great concern. And there isn't any transparency, if you just have a list of names, and all of us could get five dollars, you know, that does not, that doesn't solve my issue.
It sounds like your issue is more about the master plan than about this funding concept.
No, it's false. If people are setting up funds to say, we want sidewalks, and I'm gonna put fifty thousand dollars in there, it can only be spent for that. Have you decided for putting in sidewalks?
Well, we would have to authorize it to be done.
Yes, you would, but they can't be spent for anything else.
Well, we'd have to have it set up anyway, which would mean that we would.
But you can't spend it for anything else.
We can't spend it anyway, I mean.
But my point is, you know, you need to set your priorities and say, hey, folks, you'll still get a tax deduction. And unless you're, you're putting in a fair amount of money, given the new tax bill, most people aren't taking charitable deductions because of what the twelve thousand and twenty-six thousand dollar limits are. And so, I don't mean limits, I mean standard deduction. I'm just saying, think very carefully about this. I think that if you have fifteen thousand dollar allowance, you may have some money in the bank you wanna add to it. And when you're taking a look at, you know, where your finances are, you didn't report how much money you have in the bank and how you're doing on projections on the budget right now. If that is what's driving this, having to vote so quickly on it, then there's a different way to do that. Or somebody could give directly to the town. So, that's my concern. My concern is, you have both a fiduciary's responsibility and responsibility for running this town, and what this town looks like and how it'll function. And turning it over to people who wanna set up funds, that you may or may not wanna do, but gee, without, and without knowing who they are and what they're putting in, if they have some other vested interest, is very worst.
So, let me respond, because there's a couple assumptions that you made that are not accurate. First of all, the funds will be set up by the town council, not by the donors.
So, the town council then would decide whether, in fact, you wanna have sidewalks?
Yes.
And whether you want to have a master or a strategic plan?
Yes.
Well, that's very interesting. But why go through somebody else to do it if you can give it directly to the town?
It has to be specified upfront when it comes to the town.
Well, yes, but he's just saying.
So, in that case, you are looking at, if it says, I will give you fifty thousand dollars if you build sidewalks on these three blocks, that's all council can do if they accept the money.
Oh, no, I agree with that.
Whereas there's more flexibility if it comes through this outside party.
Why is there more flexibility?
Because the person that's making it, you have to want it to be deductible, I'm assuming.
It will be deductible either way.
It's not necessarily deductible if it's made directly to the town, unless it's for this public purpose and the money is spent in that fashion.
And why is not, why is not the public purpose putting in sidewalks on three strips?
That would be, we're talking about it. But if the, if the gift came in, it would specify what the town council had to do. If they take the money, they have to do it, so that puts them, that puts them in exactly the same situation you wanna avoid.
But, but at least it's coming to the town to do it, it's not having somebody say, putting in money that we don't know who did it, that's the other thing that really bothers me. That somebody out there with a vested interest who put a hundred thousand dollars in to that fund, and could have all sorts of conflicts of interest with regard to the business in the town. And, and because we don't know the amount. So, you know, we could all be listed with five dollars, and somebody else could have been a hundred thousand. That person is driving what's happening with a particular point of view. And I think that needs to be completely transparent. If, if to, to this town, before they decide they're gonna do that, I know I'm being facetious here, but Jim Abdo decided, it's not Jim Abdo.
It's not usually, like the visual thing.
Well, I think it's so important, Judy, thank you. And I think it kind of goes in line with what Mary Ann was saying, too.
But the fact is, it's not.
Well, the concern I have here is, the conversation is digging into, you know, we have people that wanna do nefarious things to the town. Whereas with the foundation, if I'm Joe Brown, and I like what Northern Piedmont Community Foundation does, so I wanna make a contribution to them of a hundred thousand dollars. So, I put a hundred thousand in. Now, they're serving other communities beyond Little Town, Washington. We, as a member, I guess you'd call it, to the foundation, would say, well, here's three projects that we would like to get some money for. Now, Joe Brown's put a hundred thousand dollars in, and we said, we'd like sidewalks, and that's a twenty-five thousand dollar project. So, the foundation is gonna say, we're gonna give you twenty-five thousand. And some of that came from Joe Brown. And some of that came from Mary Smith, and some of that came from Best in the Cow, whoever. Those amounts aren't necessarily gonna be spelled out in the twenty-five thousand, just that these three donors put money in. And I think that's probably a better situation for us. Because again, the donors can put in whatever they want, they wanna donate a million dollars, they put a million dollars into the foundation. But we decide what projects we would like money for. The foundation doesn't decide.
Northern Piedmont decides. No, we have our own fund. And the money goes into the Town of Washington sidewalk fund.
No, Judy, what I'm saying is.
It's not unrestricted funds from a foundation. They don't decide, we decide.
We say to them, we would like a sidewalk, we wanna do a sidewalk project. And so, we, we need.
We create a fund for that purpose.
Yeah. You say, here's, here's something that they can put money to, and they can decide. And the money could come from people who are not, it could come from our state, for all we know. All we know is that the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation gave us twenty-five thousand dollars to put sidewalks. Because we, no, because we.
Judy, Judy.
Sorry, okay, but.
Judy, just let him finish, please.
So, but we tell the foundation what projects we would like. They don't tell us what projects money was given to them for.
That scenario is possible. The more likely one is that the town sets up a fund, and people give money through the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation for a particular fund, or to be spread among the funds or what have you.
Right.
But certainly doesn't preclude that scenario, guess what?
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I think that is a better situation than someone donating directly to the town, as John's pointing out, who says, I want money for sidewalks. And I'm gonna give you money for sidewalks. And then it becomes a tussle of, well, the sidewalk should have got, you know, speculative concrete, because that's what I want. And you get into all sorts of issues. Whereas if it's coming from the foundation, you can just say, it's a concrete sidewalk.
That's a huge concern, is outside people trying to make decisions for the people.
But, so I wanna just say something, because I asked you of these people that want to give, how many, what percentage are people that live in the town? And you said eighty percent.
Yeah.
And you're saying that, you're talking about outside.
Well, I don't, I only know one name, I don't know the names of the people who are in.
I just wanted to.
Well, I know more than one name, but I only know one of those in the town, but not the point. And I just answered, building sidewalks is not one of the places you get money for Northern Piedmont. Nor is it where you get money for other things. They have certain priorities that is their money, it's like unrestricted, and you put in a proposal saying, for instance, headgear shows for the, for the schools, because that's one of their priorities, is education. And then we get a grant. I have no idea who would that money be, because it's unrestricted money. They don't have an unrestricted grant that we can say, we wanna build sidewalks, we would like twenty-five thousand dollars, or whatever the number is, and we have no idea where the money came from. We would, so, because it's not one of their priorities. Now, if they were an infrastructure foundation, your sumario might work. Very well, but they're not. And so, almost all of what we want to do, they would fund from another general fund. What we're talking about is setting up a particular fund for the Town of Washington with pots of money for some specific projects that you all wish to do. And not knowing who's putting those, those, the amounts of the dollars in. And you may be comfortable with that, I'm not. But you can also set up your own foundations, Sperryville didn't, they're not in the town. And they have a foundation.
The Sperryville Business Association set up the foundation.
They may have, but I'm just saying, the town can find.
It is not a town, it is a village.
I'm talking about this town, you could, you could work a foundation. Or you could do what Mr. Bannon said. If you have a priority, you could raise money for it without going through Northern Piedmont.
But if we do the, if we go through the town, we can't do the post office. You need that clear.
Why not?
The landscaping, that's not, it's not on town property.
No, this is.
But why can't somebody from their own foundation?
Can you use public tech?
That's what I don't understand.
Once you're accepted, it becomes public.
You know, it sounds to me, I mean, I'm a novice at this, but when you use the roof on the post office, now, if somebody was offended by the roof on the post office, this property, like you say, belongs to somebody else. So, all of a sudden, we're taking donated money and we're using it to improve somebody else's property, which bothers me, Red Gate guy, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of property. But we're using, if private citizens find that this doesn't, they don't agree, they can approach the building, belongs to them, and say, hey, we would like to help you out, we think your building would look nice to this way, we have some funds to put it into. Then it goes to the proper person, it goes to the ARB, and they look at the plans, and they say, well, it's perfectly compatible with the town, go ahead and do it. And they pay the money out without using the town as a conduit. That's what this here is, it's a conduit for tax deductions, basically. And that's what it's become, you know, you don't need, need the town to get. The town has fine a word on a lot of this without having, you know, all this stuff in between. If I wanted to buy a bush for the post office, I could go to the owner and say, hey, you know, I'd like to put a bush up in front of your, your place, or buy you a tree, or something like that, and put it out there, is that all right with you? Why do I have to go through the town then? It's like now with the trees that you, you brought up. I mean, this is a private foundation, you're giving everybody trees, people are asked to do a certain thing, get certain stuff, and it goes through the foundation. It doesn't travel through the town. You know, and it, it just strikes me as being wrong that, that, that this is sort of like a slush fund. You know, it's sort of like, we got money we wanna get rid of and write off our taxes, so we'll do it through the town.
I listen to this kind of tax burden.
What? Excuse me?
This tax burden, you know what?
Right, you know, but they could do it, but they could do it without, they could do it without the town. But my point is, they could do it, and they still would need town approval for adding sidewalks and stuff like that. But you don't, you don't have to have the town handling money and getting involved and all of that, you know?
So, you're saying to go ahead and do it through the foundation, because the town doesn't have to manage it?
Well, you do it through the foundation.
Well, then, you and I are on opposite sides, my dear.
Well, I'm not sure what you're saying.
You and I are on opposite sides.
Judy, the thing that, that I hear is that you, you, you have a lot of assumptions. You assume that people are going to be doing this for the worst reasons.
I, you said that, I haven't said that. I've said they could have vested interests, they might not be the worst interest, but I think that's why you want transparency. You want to know who's involved with this, because they, in fact, may be the people who want certain changes so that they will be able to do what they wish to do. And I might even support what they wish to do, but I don't think that's transparency. And I think it's, we have a comprehensive plan. And we have, and, you know, the, the post office, I think it's gonna look like a planning post office. It's not the kind of thing that upsets me, but that's me. And I, I just think, I mean, listen to Mr. Bannon, that there is a way to do this that will have much more transparency. It's the transparency I'm after, and the foundation has no transparency. Having a list of names where every one of us can put in five dollars, and somebody else puts in a million dollars, isn't transparency.
But Judy, if it's priorities that we, representing you all, have said are things.
Without a foundation.
Said we want as priorities, but I'm not saying we can. But I don't, I'm losing it, I'm losing the argument on how it is different as far as priorities, you know? If we decided to run it through Piedmont and say, we're gonna set up a bucket for the sidewalks, because you all told us we want sidewalks in town, okay, so we've got a bucket for the sidewalks. How we get the money for the sidewalks is somewhat incidental. Because, you know, what do you care if somebody gives a million dollars for sidewalks if you told us that you want us to build sidewalks in town? Why do you care where the money comes from?
They haven't told you.
I know, but I'm just saying, for example.
But my, my point, my point is, sidewalks are, are to some extent easy. They're also a whole lot more expensive than the town, I remember we've been talking about.
But, right, I understand.
But, but, but this idea of a strategic plan, when we have a comprehensive plan, and it's, it's, it's something that really bothers me.
If you, if you come in here as a constituent, others come and say, we don't want you to set up a fund for a strategic plan, and then we go and do it, I see your gripe. If we're not listening to you on setting up a particular fund. If we're setting up funds for things that you want us to do, then I don't understand. then I don't understand, the gripe.
I don't understand why you need to set up a foundation. Why you need to set up, it's, I come back to the transparency. All right? Let's say the person that put the money in on the school is a person that will get the contract for all of the concrete. Now, would you consider that a vested interest? And, yeah, so let's say the person that wants to do a master plan that has to do with developing the corridors, in fact, is planning to build a large, and putting in significant dollars, is planning to build a large developer. Would you call that a vested interest? And that's why I want transparency. If you decide you want to do this, at least be transparent. And, because if you're not, I can promise you, there will be a firestorm, and it won't come from me.
The, again, you're, you're going to see the names of all the people. You called a master plan, and it seems that you have a focus, and I think Joe was trying to bring this point up. You have a focus on this, what you call a master plan, which I have called a strategic plan, which-
That's not what you talked to the-
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Plan function.
Exactly. And what we're really talking about is a mechanism that can benefit the town in a number of different ways. And the issue about this strategic plan, or that you want to call a master plan, is a separate issue. And they can be brought up at the time when the town takes it under advisement to figure out whether we want to do funding for that or not.
We have different opinions, that's fine. Thank you for letting me say mine.
Is there any other comments from, from your stance?
If we went through Piedmont, I'm not sure that- I can see the danger. I can see in a larger community, the danger, where you have contractors who are putting money in with the idea that they will have influence. But here-
Most of it, so.
I doubt that anybody much is going to be contributing to the town of Washington unless they're doing it for purely altruistic reasons. We just, I, I- I can see possibilities for danger, but I think they're kind of far away. I can see more people saying, "The town of Washington." I might get, you know? I think the people who are going to want to give money are those who have the best interests.
Thank you.
Shmerak, after listening to all this, it seems to me that this is something you can't flush out all the details theoretically. That, you know, if you pursue these options in the manner that Brad brings up, that, to me, seems like it's so well insulated from somebody driving the town's agenda. That would be one way, but even if somebody came to the town, did a proposal through the foundation, restricted gift, or restricted gift to the town through a certain thing, well, that's where the operation of government kicks in, there's public hearings, there's public comment. It seems to me it's decided on a case-by-case basis. You might take it, you might not, but you, you know, you don't- The town will have its own agenda at the end of the day. I feel quite certain, having observed council for a number of years, that you're not going to buy it.
All right. Well, I appreciate the public comments on this, and I appreciate all the good thoughts from members of the town council. We will bring it up for consideration at the April meeting. We'll figure out something in the meantime.
Okay.
Okay. The, hm? No ideas. Approval of the financial procedures. First of all, I do not feel comfortable trying to speak to these on behalf of Gail, because Gail was the one to write these out.
Was table?
I prefer to table it. I don't feel comfortable with that at all. We usually make an annual contribution to a local nonprofit, and we have budgeted funds to do that. However, we did not set up a protocol for how we would invite people to make an application for that. And I think that we should probably set up a protocol before we just start saying, "This is my favorite nonprofit, and we should be giving the money to this or to that." That's just my thought off the top of my head.
Is this the same donation you did to the fire department? Or is that-
No, that's a different.
In addition?
That's done because they provide a specific service to the town over the course of the year. And this- This was, in the past, it was-
Last year.
Right. And so, what we had talked about in our budget planning process is that the town council would like the opportunity to determine where the gift would go every year. But after we made that decision, we forgot to make the next decision, which is, what's the best protocol to invite applications and to go over them and have a discussion with the town council? And I would be happy to try to write something up, unless someone would like to volunteer, like the vice mayor.
Is that something that would have to go into the paper? And then we'd have to say we were entertaining applications for this-
Tradition of town, mayor causes, appointments, or my table.
Yeah. I would feel more comfortable doing that. So what I think is, since I'm in a tabling mood, I would propose that we table that. I would come up with some protocols, maybe run up by our financials earlier. And we bring them up at the April, and then make the decisions in the May. Does that work with everybody? Okay. Barbara, you will nudge me about that tomorrow, will you?
Maybe go with the history of who we've given it to in the past. How much?
All right. We have an opening on the architectural review board with the departure of Susan Smith. And we have one applicant, Barbara?
Yes.
Ended up one applicant. Mr. Drew Mitchell has thrown his hat in the ring for this position. And Drew is a resident of the town of Washington. Drew, when did you, do you want to just say a few words about yourself?
So I, Bill and I have, I've been frequenting Rappahannock for decades and fell in love with it, and came across the opportunity to restore Avon Hall. And so, Bill Fisher and I purchased that. And so, we're, we both have a long history of both, in both historic preservation, and also just the general interest in historic preservation. We're members of, or I am a member of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. But then also, Bill brought to the table a deep history in restoring residential buildings. And so then, over the last 18 years, he and I have done a few projects together of various sizes. And so, I feel pretty comfortable and excited that, well, now that, now that there's an opening here, there are different, there are different committees. Yeah, you see, there's a variety of different committees available. And so, it seems like the timing's right. It seems to be well matched with my own expertise. So I'd love to volunteer. I'd like to ease into community involvement, and it just seems like a good fit. So that's why I was throwing my hat.
We, we, thank you very much.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Drew Mitchell.
I'd like to second.
Makes a second? Do we have any discussion about this, this character?
Well, considering the vast population of the town of Washington, it's interesting that Drew would rise to the top to ascend to this position. But, no, I think he would be a great addition and a good input, helping the town. So, yeah, I would definitely go forward with that.
He's still qualified.
Yeah. All right. Without any further ado, may I have a roll call to appoint Drew Mitchell to the architectural review board? Brad?
Yes.
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 Get that pregnant pause first. Drew, thank you so much. I'm so pleased to have you. All right. We need to develop an annual master calendar for 2021. For that, um- You ever done that in the past? Set up an annual calendar?
No.
Okay. So we need to set that up. I think that's probably, we have an administrative meeting. Do we have to do that tonight?
No.
I put it on the agenda as something to talk about. So part of why I wanted to bring that up is, we will use, so the third Friday is the administrative meeting, which is a public meeting, it's held over in the town clerk's office. We will use that meeting to put together the master calendar, and then submit it for approval at the April meeting. But I wanted to bring it to your attention tonight, members of the town council. And Mr. Bennett, in case you have anything that we should be especially mindful of as we start pulling this together.
What is on the master calendar?
What is on it?
Yes.
Any kind of town event or town-related event. So I would say to coordinate with the Washington parade people about what is their event, and that will impact when we do our social. What is social?
Does it include or note obligation dates for the town business? We start with our year?
Yes, yeah, I think we'd probably do it based on the fiscal year.
Right. But then, within that calendar, are there any indications of things that the town has, you know, filings or reportings that we have to do, say, to the state or otherwise? Is that part of the calendar?
That's a good question. I had not planned it to be that precise. It was more of a calendar of social events, of doing the budget process in March, having it on.
May I suggest that we have maybe a secondary calendar? The master calendar is more publicly facing towards all the events, but then we have another calendar so that we just understand, you know, that the quarter, this has to be done at the half, this has to be-
It's a great idea. Because I think part of this also, as we're speaking, it comes to mind is that I wanted to be able to look up and say, "Oh, jeez, we're getting to February, this is the time we need to start thinking about this."
Well, yeah, like the audit's coming up, and it's due by this date. So we need to think about our budget plan. And that's kind of, that's how I'm thinking this. Because I think in the past, like I said, I don't recall we ever having a master calendar of any kind. And, in no disrespect, Laura did a great job of managing the town. But there was many times when I just had the sense that she was doing hand-to-hand combat with the calendar.
Right.
You know, things got ahead of her and stuff like that. And I think if it's there, so we know, we can start looking forward, "Oh, yeah, that's coming up," then we, as council, if need be, may be able to jump in and help address those particular tasks.
So let's do this at the administrative meeting, which would be on next, the 20th. We're still going to hold it. And so, that's another thing which I'll bring up. I should have brought that up at the beginning, but I'll bring that up in a couple of minutes. Don't bring it up.
It's March 20th.
So March 20th, I believe is the date. What we'll do is, Brad, if you have certain things that you know, and if any of the others have thoughts of different things that we should make sure that are on my calendar-
And these are things that other organizations would have in the town, too.
This calendar is for our website?
It would be for our website, it would be for public dissemination, it would be for us. I mean, Brad brings up a good point. There'd be two layers to it. One layer is more of a public-
Public events sort of-
Public events kind of town.
Administrative calendar of town.
Right.
Yeah, administrative calendar, that's a perfect title for it.
Right. So that's what I'm thinking of.
Certainly increases transparency about those sort of things. You have to make this fair warning. You're guessing about when Christmas party is going to be for you. First week.
All right. So if that sounds good, we'll go ahead and go with that plan. That if you have anything, please pass it on to Barbara before the end of this week.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry to put that deadline on you, but the reason I do that is because the town clerk will be on an extended absence as of Friday. And we will have a, who's coming in?
Laura.
Laura's coming in to help out while Barbara is absent. And Barbara, do you know how long you'll be out?
So I'll definitely be out next week, for the entire week, and then we're going to play a night here, and hopefully I can kind of follow you.
And either hobble on in, or we'll drag you by the-
It's going to be a lot of labor.
Scrub up the neck.
And he's going to have to carry me up the steps for the March 20th meeting.
Yeah, which is another thing that we should probably get some funds to do some kind of attractive grant or something, so that this place is accessible. All right. All right, so we have that. We have a public forum is open. I have-
Shmerak, if I may, before you go to the public forum, I've been over here counting days. Catherine's office comes vacant on April 1st. And if you waited until the April meeting to initiate advertising to fill it, it would come back up on, maybe, May the 11th. By statute, you have only 45 days to fill it. So, let's say on May the 11th, you couldn't get a quorum because of coronavirus. Then it would go four days later to the circuit court with the judge to the point somewhere. So you may wish to initiate the advertising.
As soon as possible?
It's in the newspaper.
So you can tell the newspaper, too, and everything.
Into the newspaper.
Oh, it is coming up? Okay, great. We have a meeting.
Good. So, okay.
I almost have to have Catherine come back.
You're dragging people by the scrub of the neck all over the place. Thank you. Public forum, we opened up the public forum.
Real quick, has, I know that there are the boxes that you want a high school person to go through. Are there historical documents in there? Are there any images in there? Has anybody looked through any of those boxes?
The boxes where?
The ones that you want the high school student to digitize. Are there, are there images? Are there historical documents in there?
Probably.
I looked through some of the books, and they're wonderful. And they have some old newspaper stories, clippings, as well as very, like, parchment-type paper of minutes. And some of them are handwritten. And there are some images, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to be part of this internship?
You know, ship Nancy, great.
Sort of.
You would be wonderful to do this. So I would... I'll help you. I love going through those books.
Well, is your point, Nancy, if there are things like images that copies go with the Historical Society? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I was at the Historical Society today, and they asked me if I knew anything about the contents of those boxes, because they had interest in them. No, I'd still like a high school student to digitize the boring stuff, you know, of which there's a lot. I mean, you know, doc...
Quidditchism on the council.
But the Historical Society did want to know if we knew what was there.
Well, it's part of the fun. We get to find out what's in there.
Oh, I was just wondering, are we also reaching out to Wakefield or is it just Rappahannock High School?
I think...
Find an intern before you place... Yeah, I was just Rappahannock High School. There's certainly no reason that we couldn't look at Bel Air and Wakefield and...
Everyone loves that.
Yep.
Built their resume.
Yeah, yeah. Barbara, you want to add something on the records?
Yeah, so for the records, there's kind of two parts of it. The meeting minutes, which go back to 1954 on this day. Those, we have no other copies. So if something were to happen, we lose those. So that's kind of the priority first for that person. And then I'm not sure if you're referring to the boxes, the boxes that were in my office. Those were all things like A or B files, old applications. So those would be the secondary thing. I have not come across any historical documents. And I've unloaded everything that was transferred over to the office.
But there may be some maps or some...
Some maps.
Yeah, and some of those may have historical importance.
Okay.
And do we have anything left upstairs that has to be scanned or reviewed?
That are actually... We need to, and we probably need to do when finding a culling upstairs.
Yeah.
Judy?
The parade will be on December 6th.
All right.
It's back to the first Sunday since the first Sunday is...
Who's in charge of the parade this year?
We're going to be having a meeting to twist some arms.
Okay.
Carolyn is not doing it again. Tom Pelican is not doing it again. That's what I think.
There's gonna be a lot of...
I think we've got somebody to be overall chair. And, but we're gonna... And believe me, they'll all hear about the meeting if you want to come talk. Your name has come up many times here.
Hi, Marion Brown.
Hi, Marion.
Actually, you'd be good.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There are some people in the town who do not get water bills because they're renters. And a lot of the information about what's happening in the town is sent with the water bill. So I was wondering if a separate account of eight names or 10 names could be added to the water bill list but just get what's happening in the town.
That's a great idea.
I think Barbara got them from Catherine, didn't you?
I sent all the apartment tenants, which is now going to change.
Well, we didn't get anything last time.
So they did not get the invitations to the apartment?
It was not the... We didn't get anything. I didn't get a letter.
No, I know you did. They didn't get the invitations, even though I don't think there was enough time, I guess. Because when I realized that nobody in the building knew anything about it, I sent an email to Barbara, but it was so close to the event. Yeah, I...
But that building is not the only one.
That's correct.
And there are a lot of businesses. And I think it's really important to do follow-up emails so to have the social email. So that's just up to the town to do their communication. So the clerk and whoever else on that committee needs to develop...
Laura just gets to walk around and cut in with people.
She always did. Clyde does, too.
All right. I have one more thing to add for the public forum. I received an email from two property owners in the town. And he addressed a letter to all the council members. And I thought the most appropriate way to bring this up would be to bring it up in the public forum. Dear council members, as property owners in the town of Washington, we respectfully ask that the council review the state legislation referred to by the Washington Post below. Consider in a public hearing whether the town should adopt an ordinance banning such discrimination in the town of Washington. The Washington Post sentence that they are referring to says, "State delicate Danica Rome's legislation allowing localities to ban discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations, credit, or education based on sexual orientation or gender identity also passed into law." So, and this was respectfully submitted by Jay Brown and Kevin Adams, who are the owners of the Gay Street Gallery. So they are asking for this, the discrimination, anti-discrimination clause in the town of Washington to include the things that, these items, to ban discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations, credit, or education based on sexual orientation and gender identity. It seems incredulous that that is not within our anti-discrimination phrasing now. If it is not, that's a sad statement. I would be happy, as a member of the town council, to take this under consideration, as I'm sure other members of the town council would like to do so. However, before we do that, I would like to make sure that it meshes in with whatever the state and federal guidelines and also with our current discrimination statement, or anti-discrimination statement. So I would like to refer this to our town attorney to let him take this under advisement, look at it, and then report back to us at the April meeting so that we can...
I just want to add that the governor has not signed it yet. It's on his desk.
Yeah, I couldn't find the...
I couldn't... He hasn't signed it, but he's about to. And he's, he does support it.
At this moment, it's not...
I couldn't sign it. They haven't published the...
But he does support it. It's on the signing at Spurs.
Yeah. DM has been publishing some stuff on that. He's supportive across his team.
So I think it makes, from my personal perspective, it makes perfect sense. But I just want to make sure that we don't jump the gun by putting something in that then skewers up whatever the state may require from us or the federal government. So, Mr. Bennett, if you would take this under advisement? And I think, does that just need a voice vote of approval? Or do we need to roll call to defer it?
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
I don't want you to go on record.
So all those, all those in favor of that? Do I need to make a motion for a voice vote? Or do I just make a recommendation?
I think you stay at the proposition.
Before you do that, do you have to close the public forum first?
I apologize. I do that all the time. All right. So is there anything else from the public? Any other comments? All right, I closed the public forum. Now we have, I've made a proposal, and the voice vote, all those.
This is to ask for the council for the...
To refer it over to the town attorney. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So be it. Thank you, John. And a report back at people if you could. All right. This point, we have time for us to... John, you do all the right things and I screw things up. We are going to go into closed session. I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session. I would further move that the town clerk, attend this closed session as her presence will reasonably aid the council in considering the matters which are subject to the closed session. Do you have some specific inquiries that should be added to the motion?
Yes, incorporate the language which is subject to the end there. And the formal motion would be for the council to enter the closed session in accordance with provisions in section 2.237, 1187, for consultation with the town attorney regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, namely the rate of the town's meals and lodging costs.
So this is a... So this is just a motion. And this is information. So we have a motion.